Okay, well, we call this meeting of the White Lake Township Board of Trustees to order at six fifty one. Let's begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Roll call. Carrie, would you do the honors?
Vice President Richard McGlue.
Present.
Treasurer Remo Newton.
Present.
Trustee Eric Shotwell.
Present.
Trustee Carrie Francis, present. Secretary Karen Nguyen, absent, excused. President Jennifer Schultz, absent, excused.
Very good. We have an agenda in front of us. Entertain a motion to approve. Motion to approve the agenda as written.
My second.
All in favor?
I don't.
All opposed? The eyes have it. Onto public comments. Public comments, okay. Then we'll move to presentations. Emily Ridnour is here to present. Thank you, Emily. We need like a spotlight.
All right, so summer reading twenty twenty four wrap up all the good information and next year pretty, pretty stuff. All right, I'm gonna go over the challenge, our stats, and looking forward. So the challenge for this year was Adventure Begins of the Library, which was the collaborative summer library programs theme for this year. Celebrated all the different adventures. You can go on by reading and visiting libraries. This year, all the graphics were made in-house.
It is a fair year, yeah.
Thank you. We wanted to go with like a road trip camping theme specifically for the promo video, so we did the graphics a little bit different. So we did the trail sign there and then our four age categories. And our individual challenges were the baby through kindergarten, kids first through fifth, teens six through twelve, adults, and then we did a staff challenge again this year as well. And looking at stats for that. So we went back through twenty twenty two, just so you guys can see kind of where we've gone for the last three years since we've been using Beanstack. So we did have a dip in total readers for twenty twenty three after twenty twenty two, but the number of minutes read actually went up for twenty three based off of twenty two, so less readers, but they were reading a little bit more, which is nice. And then for twenty twenty four, we saw an increase across the board for pretty much everything. So we had seven hundred and eighty-six total readers, which includes the staff challenge and eight hundred and five thousand four hundred and sixty-six minutes.
Fabulous. So I have a question about this because like my grandson, who's a three-year-old.
Yes, they read their books, not five minutes.
Okay, and then you say, so those little bitty kids aren't even included in the minutes?
They're not included in the minutes, no. Some parents do do like the timer and reading books, so it is a little that could be in there a little bit, but not fully.
Okay.
And for the couple age groups, so again, that dip in twenty twenty three for adult readers and kids, but we saw an increase for all three years with teen readers. We increased for twenty twenty four with all of them. And technically, for the adult readers, because we didn't do a staff challenge in twenty twenty two, if you add those staff into the adult readers, it would be one eighty-five for twenty twenty-three and one ninety-six for twenty twenty-four, so there was that increase this year based off of twenty twenty-four. So a little bit, we're super pumped that the teen readers have been increasing, that we're getting more engagement from them, which is very exciting for me at least.
Well, the kid, across the board, teens, you know, through babies, it's great.
Yeah, increase in all of them, so hopefully next year we get like a million readers and we just see, see those bars go up every year. For the schools, I just thought this was kind of fun. Dublin is still our most active school, being the closest. They have the highest amount of readers. I was able to look at the number, but I just kind of put them in order of who participates the most. Other is kind of a big category, but that's a lot of our non-White Lake residents who don't go to schools that are in Huron Valley or Walt Lake Consolidated, so we tried so we tried to add some of the like non-HVS or Walt Lake schools are from here a little bit, but not all of them are. And then our homeschoolers is the fourth bar, which is yellow, which is actually quite a bit as well, so we have a lot of homeschool kids participating. And then this one was just fun for me. This is kids zero through seventeen, so our most active age group is seven-year-olds, followed by nine and a half, and then six and a half and eight and a half are tied together, which is just fun. So seven, seven-year-old second graders is like our most active group of kids.
Okay.
It's fun.
How do you keep these, these, these numbers? How do you know which numbers go with these, with these colors?
Yeah, the graphs in Canva are not. I wish it was a few numbers for each little bar, but it's just fun.
Okay, what will Rich? He helped me. He said they're in order.
They're in the same order. Yes, yes. So zero, little babies at the front, one, while they're through seventeen.
I think what's great with the seven-year-olds is that that's leading its way up to that third grade level, and it's nice to see because in a couple of years, that should continue to keep going up. And we know our third grade is having, since COVID, has been having issues, our third grade students.
Did you put the seven and seven and a half together then?
Because you have like six, six and a half.
So there were no seven and a half-year-olds.
Oh.
So rather than put the junior year old or something.
Okay. But so, but okay.
Yeah, same with the schools. There's a couple of schools that are in like our, in our Beanstack system, but there was no kids that participated from that school, so I just let them out rather than put even more text up top there, but hopefully they participate. And moving forward, so the theme for next year is Color Our World, which focuses on art and creativity. There could be an Amy Bob Ross appearance in the promo video. We already started working on the script a little bit.
Really?
Yes, it's gonna be fun. We're releasing, returning back the tiny art show, which we did a couple of years ago as like a whole summer-long program throughout the library, since it ties in with the theme. And there's just so much we can do with youth and teen, but even with adult that focuses on art and creativity, so we're really pumped to start planning for summer super soon. We're also going to be investigating age groups and how it's split up for summer reading, because we have gotten some feedback from parents both positive and, you know, wish things could be better of like the book tracking, minute tracking. Kindergarteners are in the younger group and they want to be in the older group, so we're gonna kind of make it a little bit flexible and make it more of like a treasure chest prize situation where you read, that's awesome, you're a prize. But our possible ideas are read to me, read with me's, and independent readers, which seems to be what a lot of other libraries do of just to separate it out a little bit, but kind of gonna be one pod to get the kids reading, so it'll be fun. And then for twenty twenty-six, we're super pumped for this one too, is Honor of Story, which is dinosaurs, archaeology, and paleontology themed. Twenty twenty-seven will be Mysteries await at your library, which is mystery detective and suspense themed. And then twenty twenty-seven, they just decided on the theme, so no slogan yet, but mythical creatures, you know, mermaids, dragons, and et cetera. So lots of fun things we can do with all of them, pump to get maybe Paleo Joe back for the dinosaur and look at the T-Rex skull again.
So is this across MLA or is it?
This is for CSLP, which is nationwide.
Okay, thank you.
Which is, there's a couple of different like nationwide organizations that pick themes for summer reading. Most libraries in this area use CSLP. It's just, they're all, they're all great, but this is what we do. So we don't have to use these themes, but they make it easy and they provide graphics, which is fun easier for us. Not like this year where I do everything. Any questions for me?
I think summer, summer reading this year was phenomenal. I really, really enjoyed it. You know, my family enjoyed it. The, the year-end party was over the top. It was crazy.
A good time.
Yeah.
These graphics are world-class.
The slides are from Canva, but the graphics for summer. I had a good time.
You did a really nice job.
Yes, you did.
Thank you, and thank you.
Okay. Very good. Okay, on to approval of the minutes you have in front of us. The minutes of last month.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of the White Lake Library Board of Trustees on August twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
All opposed? The eyes have it. Okay, next we have officers' report, no president's report. I have no vice president's report. Secretaries' report. Carrie, do you want to, do you have anything?
I do not.
Then, okay. Treasurer's report.
Okay, well, unfortunately, the treasurer always has a report, right? And I don't know if people have looked at fund balance. I'm really, we're not gonna actually go through CDs today, but in the next month, we're gonna review. We have a Flagstar CD in December, a Genesis in December, and our, our JP Morgan Chase in November. So all of those are gonna be addressed in October in either our in our meeting in, for the budget or at the end of October. Okay, so actually, Finance Committee actually discussed that a little bit today. So the only other, I have two other things, and one is that we did go to the banks today and I communicated with the banks that we're able to do online and really effective in the next few days, we're going to, Carrie's gonna be a signer, Rich is gonna no longer be a signer, so all of that's been updated. I am gonna reach out to Flagstar and ask them to wait until maybe next Tuesday or Wednesday to update our signature card, so Rich is gonna sign checks today so that we can have those checked, so that we can have those done today. So I did update everything. Everything's actually updated and ready to go except for Chase, which is, I needed this document, and I think they want to come in and meet with us. And the other thing I have is if any, if people have looked through the bills for the month, if they have any questions. Everything's been, you know, pretty much as usual. There's not really been any big changes in, we're working on the budget. So if there's any questions, I'm gonna present the the September twenty twenty-four financial statements and bills to be paid as presented.
I will second. Can I do that?
Have you been moved and seconded?
Secretary.
Okay, now.
Yeah, she can.
No, you can second. Yeah, yeah, yeah. All in favor?
I.
Oppose? The eyes have it. Anything else?
I don't have anything else for the treasurer's report. Thank you.
On to Libraries Director, Library Directors' report.
Okay, been a busy tip of outreach month. We were at Fisk Farm Festival, which was a lot of fun. Very cold the first day, much nicer the second day. Linda and I, Linda took care of the friend, for the friends, took care of the friends table, and I was at the library portion of the table, and it was cold. It was hat and blanket cold.
She said that she really appreciated you bringing her a blanket.
Oh. Yep, you definitely needed some nice warm coffee and a blanket, so. And big thank you to the staff that also helped out with that, Jennifer, Emily Faith, and Kathy, so that was a nice time. We were at the Lakeland High School Curriculum Night, and that was a lot of fun to be back at Lakeland. And had some ongoing partnerships with Milford, I can't talk tonight, Milford here on Valley Lions Club, another Project Kids site screening. And of course, one of our partnerships with the DAR for our Constitution Week display. There's another chapter we work with, and they are gonna be doing the missing man display this year.
Fairness.
So we'll be coming back with that one. Our circulation staff are doing some professional development. Sarah attended a book repair workshop. We also had Kathy and Heather took care of our attending a table at the White Lake Township Fire Department Open House this year, which kudos to them. It was huge, 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 lots, lots of people. Yeah, so it was a really, really good time. Communications and marketing going well. We did get a five-star, which was kind of nice. Wasn't expecting that. Me, I would, obviously, my committee meetings, because you're there, and Library Michigan Directors' meetings, attended a very important webinar on the Michigan paid leave and minimum wage changes. So important that I have to watch it again to take more notes, because I can kind of gather. Piggybacking off of that, we'll be meeting with the attorney, who was our attorney, that actually did that webinar, to kind of help us facilitate our, what we're gonna need to do.
What was the date on that again, do you remember?
Yeah, that is October. I'm sorry, I'm back in September. Let me get to October.
Oh.
October fifteenth.
Thank you.
Yep. That'll be a Zoom meeting with our attorney. Facilities, obviously, the facilities portion of the report is bigger, and that's because of our new facility specialist, who's doing a great job, so big thank you to David for getting, and, and there's more, you're gonna see this get a little bigger each month, because there's just so much he's getting done. Johnson Controls was out to fix some of our HVAC issues, and so far, since they've been out, we have not had to reset the breaker for the RTU five unit, so we're on our way. One thing that was interesting when Johnson Controls came out, and I'm still investigating this a little bit, but we had had, kept having problems with an exhaust fan. And so when they were up on the roof, they took it apart, and there was no exhaust fan there. It looks as if an exhaust fan had never been installed in this one area, and he took pictures to show us, so. Yeah, so I'm investigating that, and we're gonna need probably an exhaust fan, because there's no exhaust fan there. It's not like something would steal it. It literally, according to the Johnson Controls person, it looks like it just was never installed.
Okay.
I bet's, can't figure.
Would probably not be an unusual situation, so.
It's unusual, but.
A little shocking.
It's four or five years, half a year's in.
Yeah, so which really could have caused quite a number of reasons why we've had some of the problems that we've had, so I'm gonna get a quote for an exhaust fan.
Do you need a quote for an exhaust fan, or do we call the place, the company that installed all of them to begin with?
Well, that is another thing I was gonna look at to see if we're still technically under.
But even if we weren't, you can say we had to have somebody look at it, and there's actually no fan there.
Yeah.
Probably bill of materials before.
Right, and worst case, they say, sorry, but I would think that they would.
I'm wondering if it's Goyette, and that's what I want to check on, because that's even, I, I don't know, so I'm gonna take a look at that too.
I don't think it was, but I don't know.
Because it seemed bad.
Yeah, it was.
I'm just a little bit disturbed too, because if Goyette's been coming out to check all of this, why was that missed for five years?
I would agree.
That means you're not opening up.
Right.
So. So that's that. Friends had a successful September book sale, bringing in over seven thousand dollars, so kudos to them. They want to thank our new facility specialist, David, for helping them install their new heavy-duty doorstops and their cabinet, so now they now have a nice new cabinet in there. And the, just a reminder, the quarterly meeting and twenty twenty-four check presentation are scheduled for Tuesday, October fifteenth, at one PM. So if you can be there for that photo op, we would appreciate it if, I'm also scheduling them to come to the later October meeting, whether we wind up having that on the actual night or act, or, or on the backup date, the thirtieth, so either way, I've, I'll remind them, but yeah. We received three large boxes of seeds from Tractor Supply and one large box from Bogey Lake Greenhouse to our seed library. That was very much. Like tote size.
Okay.
Yeah, then, yeah.
That goes.
Yeah.
Wow, that's a lot. Wow.
When we updated the hotspot policy, we're continuing to do a little bit of streamlining on the staff procedure side to commute, to improve communication between the two departments handling what happens when hotspots are returned and specifically when they're late, so we're doing some improvement on that for us.
No change in general.
No, no.
Okay.
It's just our inner. As you know, I mentioned before that Emily put out an educator newsletter, and she did receive a request through that, and what was important about it is that it wasn't part of the original group that she sent it to, so it means that the educators that she did send it to sent it out to their teachers, other educators, so. And one of those actually called and asked for us to come and visit three ninth-grade English classes at Lakeland. So she's gonna be doing that in early October.
Fabulous.
Yeah. Again, as Emily touched upon, she is doing some surveying of summer reading to find out, you know, the different logging and what people are looking for, what type of change they're looking for. And one of the things they did ask for was for library swag as prizes, so we're gonna take a look at that.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, we did a little bit of it this year, and oh my goodness, were they excited. Some really nice coffee mugs, and so, yep. And then Emily also hosted a table at Lakewood Elementary Curriculum Night, so we've been really getting into the schools, and I, I do think that is part of why we did go up in summer reading a bit this year, is because we did get up, we're starting to break in, and that is an ongoing, it's, you have to keep feeding on that and building it. It's, that's the only way you get in, and it's even harder now than it used to be post-COVID to, to get into the schools, and so, good stuff. We do have a fire drill scheduled with the, with the Fire Department for October. They help us facilitate that, and they actually time us, so try to make sure that we're faster and faster each year. Maria received her librarian's permanent professional certification, so congratulations to her.
Very nice.
Big thank you to our sub Kristen for eight years of service. And if you haven't been down to the Youth, Youth Information Desk area, please head on down there, because one of the monitors that is off of our friends wishlist has been put up behind the desk, and so now you can really see nice and bright the programs as you're standing there. And so the kids come up, they're, this could be you.
That's good.
So. A big thank you.
Marketing, marketing, marketing.
Yeah. So big thank you to David, to Mike, to Amy for getting all of that ironed out. I'm getting all done. Otherwise, stats? Stats a little bit down. And some things for the month of August. Dog days of August.
Circulation looks, oh, I see, compared to July, but that's pretty typical.
Well, yeah, if you look across, if you look across the, each, every year, except for twenty twenty-one, well, twenty twenty, like last year, it was down about the same amount.
And then speaking of that, that leads me to a little bit on the construction side of things, so I just spoke to Springline. They're, the guy there that I talked to, let me.
Springline, that company that's doing it for the county?
Yeah, they're for the township. They're doing, well, county, yeah, the road commission. They're working together, but they let me know that around October first, so coming up, they're supposed to make that change to the side entrance. So I'm gonna call them on Friday and just, can you?
So what is that?
Down for me.
Going to have.
So what's exactly when it happened is they're gonna close off our front so that they can finish the road from where they are right now, which is just past our entrance, to the back entrance of Prover. So you'll see the tarp line ends right there. They're supposed to, but I haven't confirmed it yet, that they're supposed to open Elizabeth Lake Road from the Tegardine circle there, so that people could come to the library into our side entrance from there. I am not for sure on that. It still could be the town center. You still might have to go through that. I don't know yet. We'll have to see. So that, and then that is supposed to last through mid-November.
Okay, so we have another seven weeks. So when they close our front entrance, what are they doing? Are they putting more boulevard in?
Yes, so you can see how they started it. If you've looked down there, that will continue.
How much of our rope furniture they?
There, you can see a line from the, of the entrance where it's cut. It's like just past the.
So all the curb and everything has to be redone?
Yeah. I don't know if they're gonna redo the sidewalk to match, because you can see the sidewalk coming up. Right now, we just have the asphalt sidewalk, so I don't know if they're gonna come up and do that. If I look at the saw line, maybe? I, that has not been.
Nice to be good.
Yeah.
Would be, be more cohesive. But.
Okay.
That's where we're at, so more to come on that. But otherwise, that's it for my report.
Well, thank you. Our next topic is committee reports. Finance. Committee is the first one up.
First, okay. All right, so we had a meeting on eighteenth, that was our last meeting, and we April is, you know, been presenting the budget, and it's almost ready to go. So I'm really hoping that this year's budget approval goes very, very smooth. We there's a couple of things that April's gonna deliver to the Finance Committee about some changes for staffing, and then we're probably going to put a stamp on it and say we like this budget, and it really looks great. Very, very happy with April's done some really nice updates. It makes it really clear, and you know, like last year, she gave us a narrative. We're gonna have a narrative again this year, and she has things that show where if they decreased or stayed the same or increased. It's very easy to read, and and we've been through it over and over again, and April's done a great job, so we're very happy about where we're at with the budget right now, and I think there shouldn't be really issues for the, the board to be able to really take a good look at it during the budget meeting and, and approve it for twenty twenty-five. The CD review, I need to do some follow-up. I know that rates are, have dropped a little bit, and I think that our Genesis rate was fabulous that we got in last couple of weeks ago, which is not on the, I notice it's not in the board packet that updated Genesis CD, but I did send it, that information to Joe.
Right.
And, and I think we got that at five and a half, but interest rates right now are about four and a half. So we're gonna see a little bit of a decline for twenty twenty-five, okay, so. And then we're still continuing with the, the budget meetings and the fund balance policy and our investment policy. And we're almost there, and those should be in and we haven't heard back from the auditor yet, right, on the interest rate policy and custodial credit policies, okay? So.
I'm hoping before Monday I hear something.
Okay, all right. So that's it for finance. Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
The Strategic Plan Committee.
She want me to touch upon what we.
Yeah.
Okay, so we did have, Strategic Plan Committee did get together for our September, we were quarterly. We reviewed progress on all year-one tactics. You will see some of the updates in the current year. And then we also, I also created a summary document, which is not, you don't see that here yet, but that was, it's to give a general wrap-up of all year-one tactics for historical tracking as the first circles are completed, so that we don't lose the progress. If, you know, anything comes up in the future, we have something to reference and go back to, so that has been started and created, but you will see a few. you know, anything comes up in the future, we have something to reference and go back to. Uh, so that has been started and created, but you will see a few um things here that will help you to say, well, where are we on this as of right now? And that kind of gives some uh understanding of that. I uh will be starting soon as I get through budget. The year in review infographic to include the strategic plan accomplishments. Uh, because I want to, normally we have, as an example, we have just the one infographic which which tells how much did we check out, how many patron cards, uh, all of our normal library stats, but I want to make that a little bit bigger to include you the strategic plan first year stuff. So I'll be start working on that. Uh, for the strategic plan committee to review at our December meeting and then you'll see it after that. Uh, along with that, which because that would debut in January, we do want to plan a celebration. Uh, the committee has asked that we plan a celebration of staff work towards the goals. Um, and uh you know, not only that, but staff are going to have to start looking at year two and what do you want to do? So.
The cycle continues.
Let's continue.
Very good. And strategic plan committee questions?
Hello?
Then on to the policy committee.
Policy committee did that actually meet this last month. Uh, we have tabled it to the following, so I forget what date it is.
The fifteenth.
So the fifteenth, February fifteenth.
Yes.
Okay. Then we'll move to the building committee. Uh, for.
I mean, uh.
Sure.
Okay, so um, as you know, we are presenting the the acoustic improvements votes for the Idea Lab tonight. Um, take a look and see how those are. I uh, uh, building assessment, I am meeting with um Andrew from McCarthy Smith tomorrow morning to walk the building. He has provided me a potential quote for to have a building, if we wanted a building assessment done. And uh, but I do want to walk the building with him just to make sure that the quote is kind of what we want. Um, if it includes everything that we want, talk with him, get an idea for that. Also, because as I still think this is something that we might be able to do in-house, that's why I want to kind of talk with him and see, am I, am I just thinking we can do this? I I've uh, was a part of it at my previous library where it was done in-house, but I just kind of want to get a feel for it with with Andrew and see how that is. Um. So maybe more potentially more on that. Um, as I've discussed with finance committee, the potential for that, but we'll see how that goes. Um, the after hour hold lockers and browsing lockers, so as we talked about before, the cost of the lockers for the twenty-seven hold pickup is very high. And so the committee would like to continue researching less expensive options next year. And so thus in strategic planning, we are going to move it to a year two. So that's something that we discussed also in strategic planning. Um, as two of the members are on to the committee, so that made it a little easier to do that. Um, the preliminary investigation on browsing lockers is complete. Um, and we feel we need more patron input on best locations in the community. Um, that involves surveying and a little bit more. And so the committee has decided to return to this tactic in year three. Uh, we feel it's more important right now to focus on bringing people here as opposed to reaching outside just yet. And so we kind of want to, that's our focus for now. Uh, what came up before the lockers and all of that was the digital sign. And so I have received two um, two quotes on the digital sign and I'm working on figuring this out for and have presented a little bit about it in the twenty twenty-five budget so that we can further investigate improving our digital sign, which it desperately needs. Uh, donotry and dedication plaque, uh, updates continue on that. Um, just waiting for a few final thoughts uh from building committee, which we're still discussing that. And have done some uh, some fun investigation for possible things for the friends wishlist, including an ever bright interactive light wall. That looked kind of fun. And again, just continuing to deal with getting the HVAC issues fixed and looking at quotes for the future maintenance of the system. Any questions? What's going on?
Good stuff. Any questions? So with with that, uh, we'll move to new business. We have the Idea Lab acoustic improvement votes review.
Okay, I'm just going to this over there. Since I've got everything up.
You have, they should have the two quotes in the packet. Castle and image three sixty.
Okay, so let me show you first the images. I'm going to start with the the image three sixty. What they are for both.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's great.
So we looked at a couple of different images from a couple of different ones. Uh, when this originally came through, they were suggesting the, and that blue is going to match the teal that's on the wall. Um. Blue with white, white was clouds, um, and that was something that the building committee was kind of looking at. Uh, when we saw it, uh, there was a suggestion to say, uh, you know what, I think it makes more sense to have it all one color. And so that was one thing that um, that was one way of looking at it. The other, they also wanted it, we wanted it to match on the other wall.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so both actually point upwards towards the window. So well, it's literally matching. What you'd see here is they would paint the strip, they would paint the stripe to be identical to the one on the other wall. Um, same level, same height, same everything. Uh, and then those would, the panels would match exactly. The reason that we, and this one doesn't show a ceiling one, is because what in talking to both of the companies, we realized we really didn't need to have the ceilings, uh, the ceiling and the walls, that it was going to be enough to do either or. Uh, and so I'm, I'm very glad there was some honesty from the company, companies about that. Now, the quotes for this one, I have to actually show you two. Um, I was wrangling all of these vendors down to the minute today to get everything set up. So you'll see this is the amount for image three sixty, uh, the basic amount. See that there fourteen, seven, sixty, but in actuality I have to add on this too. It's an additional twelve eighty and that is to paint the um, that other wall. So the total is a little over sixteen thousand for this to do.
Can you go back to that other? Other estimate?
Yes.
The other part of that estimate?
Yeah, good. Thanks. While you look at that. So. This next one is our other company that we looked at, Castell. We did originally ask for three companies, the third company just wasn't quite as responsive. Uh, and so that brought us down to two quotes. And so this one, this one from Castell, I'm going to show you what this looks like. Um, so they have two solutions actually. This you'll see, these, this is suspended from the ceiling. These are um colorful, you don't, and the colors you see are not, they're just, they're not, they're not final choices. In other words, okay, but you can see there would be disc style hanging from the ceiling. This one gives you a little bit better thing because you can see that.
They're just going to coordinate with what other colors we have.
The difference for them is that they, for their wall, it would be exactly on that teal stripe. Okay, whatever color we chose would be right on, whereas image three sixty kind of went gave a little bit more to it up more. Theirs is exactly on the line. They would also have the same thing on the other wall. It's hard to tell, but.
So then, so this one, they're talking about doing the the drops in the ceiling and the wall?
I'm going to show you the quote because it's either, it's, it could be all of it.
Okay.
Or it could be the ceiling or it could be the walls. You can see here on that, the wall where the team goes to the team room, they would have the same matching stripe on that wall. So you can, the two options really, the three options are the whole thing or just the ceiling or just the two walls. I'm going to break that down for you on the quote. But here is now. This here of that
Is the ceiling.
Look at that. Um, is going to come to, if you chose just to do the ceiling, it would be around twenty-four nine sixty.
Um.
I, it's gonna, I know, I like to look from.
Yeah, because I'm saying fourteen, four.
Yeah, fourteen, four plus this here.
These two.
Okay, yeah, you know, believe me, I had to talk with her today quite a bit.
So it's.
Uh, this would probably be a little less, but I'm just giving you the number based on it because obviously you would have.
It's going to be twenty-four thousand dollars for the ceiling.
For the ceiling, twenty-four nine sixty for the ceiling. If you wanted to just do, have them do just the two walls, it's going to be twenty-four, seven, sixty. So it's two hundred dollar difference.
Okay.
Okay. If you wanted to do the whole thing, it's going to be this.
Okay.
Okay.
So option one's the ceiling is going to be around twenty-five. Option two is the walls only, it's going to be around twenty-five. So there's a big discount if they do both. Okay.
Image three sixty is just over sixteen total.
And just, and that's just the side.
And that's just the sides. That's a, there won't be a ceiling option. Now I can tell when you, I'll show you, you know, back to here.
They basically said on the ceiling option that we, we probably get enough out of the side to to, you know, create that to dampen, dampen, it would dampen it enough. We could always go back and add, but.
Well, if we go back and add the ceiling, then it's going to be.
Going to cost, you know, more by um, but the CEO, the 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 base price for just, you know, the sides is going to be less than the base cost of doing the sides and the with Castell. I mean, the basically the the a material is pretty close to the cost of the, of the material installed on three sixty.
But when I look at this, um, the image three sixty, there's no quote on here. Um, so when you're looking at this quote, that when you're looking at the Castile quote, it includes shipping freight. So when I look in at apples to apples here, because um, there, if you look at this one, there's no shipping here. There's no freight here. If you look at the Castile one, it's freight and installation. So is the image three sixty, this is this product.
Install.
And it says install, so it does include the installation, but is there a freight cost on it?
He's never done a freight cost on the other items that he's.
Okay, that's why I'm asking. Because you know, I see, so I'm trying to look at what's on this quote versus what's on this quote that would be a difference in price. So there's no freight cost on this one. Okay, so what is the, what is the um, billing committee recommending?
Building.
Yeah.
So we, uh, so when we met, we didn't have all of the information.
Okay.
But we were, we were leaning toward the three sixty and from there because it felt like it was going to, it was, looked to be less. I mean, but we hadn't seen the, you know, the, the final numbers and I um, we didn't say vote on it per se. Um, I think uh but I mean, is that, you know, consistent with, you know.
And you looked at, but we were able to see a, a excellent sample of both products?
We knew, well, we didn't physically see them.
We didn't physically see the in our hands, we did not see the image three sixty products. We did go to Castell's showroom and saw the buzzy tabs and the different options there. So.
Yeah, because I'm curious of, you know, it's a big difference in price. So Castile is probably, it's probably looks like a fabric, right? What is this look like? Is it, is it a fabric? What is it?
So these actually are painted, they can be painted to match. So it's less of a, less fabricy than um, Castell.
And do they, and I'm, I'm being very ignorant here because I don't know anything about sound, acoustics, right? Um, these, these sound systems. Do they have a level of absorption of sound that they, if you uh?
So Ca- Castle, yes.
Okay, thanks. That's what I was looking for.
Yeah, so right there, you can see how all, if you did all of it, this is how much it would drop.
Okay.
Obviously, if you do a little less, it's going to be a little less and but.
Okay, so which one of those lines?
Drops.
Which?
So this.
Is both.
Is both, yeah.
Yeah.
Which one, the one that's higher, which one is that?
I think that was just the ceiling alone.
Okay. All right. And what about image three sixty? What's there?
They weren't as fancy as that to show you.
No, I mean, but but what did they say that absorption was?
They didn't give us exact numbers. They just said it would definitely take your own.
Yeah.
Damage.
Aesthetically, I like this, I like the disc and the ceiling better.
Yeah.
But I'm not on billing here, but aesthetically, I think both, those are pretty sharp looking.
Oh, I definitely agree.
Yeah, but are they necessary?
But are they necessary? Yeah, and and what's, you know, um and also in the, I, the Idea Lab, in my mind, the Idea Lab is a more of a what's the right word? It's, it's, it's not a, it's not an office.
Right.
You know, and it's more of a like, not a shop feel, but.
It's a lab.
It's a lab, yeah. There and.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, those, I think that, you know, I know they're a product and it looks really nice. Like I said, is it necessary?
Yeah, yeah. That's my.
Is it ten, is it worth ten thousand dollars more?
No, that was.
Okay, there we go.
I think, yeah, ten thousand dollars of of the taxpayers' money.
Right.
Is a lot of money.
Yeah, and I think for um, in terms of the image three sixty, I think that was bolder in terms of that teal color that matches everything. And I think the Idea Lab should be bold, you know, I mean, given what it is and its purpose.
Okay, I liked the idea of the two matching and bringing out that blue. I, I think it just adds to it and it's, we know it's enough to at least lower that echo, which is part of the problem.
Okay.
So, do we um?
Thank you, Karen.
I agree. I like the image three sixty design. I think at some point you say, not to be trivial, but at some point you say, how much does this matter? Not to be trivial on it, but at some point you say, how much does this matter? Does this matter worth ten thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's what I think.
And i- is, does it have to be permanent? Also, we're not telling you about like it being necessarily. For the life of the library.
Right.
I- it's not something that we couldn't change out in a few years if we needed to or wanted to.
Everybody to be noiseier or less.
Yeah, if if for some, right, right. I- if for some reason we find that it gets, it gets, the volume increases dramatically or that it doesn't do what we thought it would do. Yeah, it's, it's, I'd rather see us sink less money into that.
Yes, I think their uh im- image three sixties comment, well, you know, this isn't enough. You can add more, right, but they didn't think it made sense to sell us more.
And I think, I guess from my perspective, I appreciated the fact that they were being honest and candid with us about what we really needed versus, you know, you can have all of this or you can have this.
Right.
They said this should be sufficient.
Yeah.
I, we get to a point where, you know, right now, the idea that we're starting to see more people go in there. Um, families using it, but it gets to a point where. I mean, you've got people in there every day, it's this, and then maybe that's the time to address, is it, is it getting louder? Is we need something more, but right now, it's um, I think this might do enough.
Well, we're not trying to remove all sound.
Yeah.
Right.
We're trying to just make it more acoustically friendly in general.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the image three sixty bid for the acoustic wall tiles.
And I'm seconded.
I'll bring up one point of of discussion.
Okay.
Would, um, I don't, I probably know this answer, but don't remember it. Where's the standard versus the budget to reestablish?
I mean, yes, that, um, yes, so we, I believe in fund balance, I had put aside thirty.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, from that perspective alone, I I'm even more in favor of it simply because it leaves some extra money beyond, had to move around if needed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're in the last week, touch fund balance, I hope you're.
We actually aren't going to, um, besides the building assessment next year. The plan is not to use fund fund balance from right here.
Yeah, so we have the motion on the table, it's been uh seconded. Any other discussion? Then all in favor?
I.
All opposed? The eyes have it, thank you.
Nice job. Nice job.
Yeah, thank you for the due diligence on all of that detail.
We were building, it's very nice to help.
For sure.
I think it's great to have have different opinions on these things that you come up. Think about it from different perspectives and and then still to get a reasonable decision.
Yeah. Yeah, it's gonna look really nice.
What was the time, five, quarter, five weeks before shipping and then how long for installation?
Not too long, less than, less than a week. Yeah.
Hey, then we have the. Library Board yearly meeting schedule review.
Yeah, so it's that time of year. Um. Uh, recently, just as a side note, recently, I created my own document that's gonna help us to stay on track in the coming year. As far as making sure that we, some of these things that we know, I need to come to you, come to the board to approve. Uh, I've made a spreadsheet for uh Amy and I to make sure that we bring it to you. This is one of them, twenty twenty five regular meeting schedule. Obviously, not too much difference here, you know, we're just talking the difference of the days as the years go by. Um, I would draw your attention most closely to the budget review session, which is. If you're liking this year how we're doing it, uh, that's the same. And then the same thing with November, December, which is always the third Wednesday on both of those months due to the holiday. So unless you're thinking you wanna change something with the budget review session date. Uh, this is a ditto pretty much of last year. Or this year.
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good with it. I just went through my calendar.
Entertain a motion to approve?
I'm motion to approve the twenty twenty five regular meeting scheduled, White Light Township Library Board of Trustees.
All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? And. Next, uh, is there any old business? No, in which case I would entertain a final motion, like a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? The eyes have it, meeting adjourned at seven forty seven.